Ask for thy guidance and direction, help us to be able to understand the things that are presented and help us to make decisions that will prosper our community. Grateful for the opportunity that we have to serve. Please bless those who are mourning at this time and those who are suffering from illness. This we ask in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilor. All right, so today we have council meeting, it's a regular meeting on this 25th day of May 2021. And we want to acknowledge that Counselor Court may be a little late due to personal circumstances. And we have Counselor Benge and Counselor Barnes on Zoom. And everybody else is there, so thank you, Corinne. For the media. We're doing with the new technology. It's going to make our communication better in time. So we have an agenda, and if you are okay with this agenda, we need it adopted. Counselor Brown?
Make a motion to adopt the agenda, the 25th day of May 2021.
Thank you. So the meeting is called to order. We are no delegation. We have minutes.
All in favor?
Oh, sorry, all in favor? You see, this is how you get distracted with new technology.
Mesmerized by the TV screen.
Okay. We have a regular meeting of council. The minutes of it.
I'll move to adopt the regular meeting minutes of council for May the 11th, 2021.
All in favor? Thank you. Now, the bylaws and policy item. Go ahead, Counselor.
With that last meeting, there was one. Counselor Brown and I made a motion on the same first reading of the bylaw. I don't know if you noticed that or not.
No, I didn't. Okay.
We both made a motion on first reading or second reading, one or the other, so one of us should do one and one of us should do the other.
Well, there was first reading, second reading, allowing third, and third.
Yeah, but it says that first reading, first reading, allow for.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay. And, you know, I noticed something else, but I don't have the minutes on front of me.
1120, it just needs to say second.
If you look at the beginning of those meetings, there is something that refers to Counselor Brown and Counselors Court regarding the Heritage Day.
Yeah.
There is the word counselor that's missing for Counselor Court. Or put an S at counselor, one or the other. So, all right. Yeah, I mean, those are nothing, but.
Well, we want to nitpick just for the heck of it.
I know. Thank you, you read.
There you go.
So bylaw 1697 into municipal development plan.
Remember sending bylaws to the man?
Yeah. Hold on a second, I'm really not with it today, am I?
Oh, well, 1699.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Barnes. You want to help us?
I sure do.
Go ahead.
I move second reading for bylaw 1591 to allow to remove this from the historical status. By making it bylaw 1691.
Yeah, 1699.
Yeah, so recently. Okay, all in favor? Thank you. All right, let's do the proper thing now.
I'll move third reading of bylaw 1699.
Thank you. So that's to help the Grotto lose that historical status. All in favor? Thank you. Now we done that right. You got to keep me on my toes today. I had a little bit of a hectic day, I must say. Okay, bylaw 1697, intermunicipal development plan. Maybe that's what has my blood a little bit spinning.
Really?
All rest of us.
All right. So we had a meeting, Counselor Court, Counselor Silk and myself with the county regarding our concerns of the changes made to the map of the exclusion of the CFO. And that map had not been shared with anyone that had been originally on a mailing list. And as you can see in the letter that has been provided, it is a requirement of the MGA to have proper communication with the people that could potentially be affected by those changes. Therefore, what we need to know is, we had asked, and it seemed that we're willing to entertain it, but to put it in action is a different story. We not, do not know the position on the county after they had their council meeting yesterday, or today. So we do not know what their position is. But opposition would be that we want the people informed. We deem it important because the decision that made was with a first letter that does not have the same look as to what may come in the neighborhood now, potentially. So what we need to do is direct administration to send that letter as to all the original recipients, if you feel okay with that idea. I see nods. Counselor Barnes, Counselor Benge, how do you feel about that?
I think you should send that letter. I don't think it's right.
Okay, all right.
Get the information.
All right, so maybe we need a motion to direct administration.
I'll make that motion to direct administration to write a letter to the county.
To the mailing.
Oh, to the mailing, sorry.
The mailing list.
Mailing list.
Okay.
Jeff?
Just, I want to mention one thing, just in case you're wondering. So the IDP is part of the overall intermunicipal collaboration framework, and we were given an extension till the end of May. Now, when we send out this correspondence, we recognize we will not have it back by the end of May, and the county recognizes that as well. The discussion at the meeting was that because if both parties agree to send the correspondence and just on this one issue, we'll simply let the minister know that we are agreed on the IDP and that we both agree to work towards.
Completion.
Completion of this one item. And so it shouldn't complicate any deadlines that we have. We have other items that are complicating the deadline far more than this one that we'll talk about later. So Murray and I will deal with the minister's office on that portion of it.
Okay. So we have a motion on table. We okay with that? All in favor? Thank you. All right. This one is a new item, that came a little bit after the fact, after you received your adjut. Oh, just for me? Okay, all right, so I'm now, I'm now in the loop. That's good. So capital budget funding adjustment, as you know, we were hoping for the federal gas tax to be doubled up this year, and we had that in the budget, but it's not quite the way it's happening. Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, we, Hocken was, brought this to my attention on Friday. It doesn't look like this fiscal will be the doubling of the federal gas tax. It looks like it's next. When we did the budget, we were optimistic. It was this, and we were attempting to preserve MSI. So it may just be coming next year. But when we pass the capital budget, and this is, Hocken and I agree it's a bit of an oversight, we left everything funded by federal gas tax on Second Avenue West without having confirmation in hand that it was coming. And we still think it's a project that we need to do. We think that it's an important one. We do have the surplus MSI this year, and we think that we can offset MSI expenses with federal gas tax next year. When that doubling comes, we can adjust next year's capital. So what we're requesting, and it's at the bottom of the RFD, it's a bit of a complicated motion, but I just want to explain the two other small items. When you're under MSI, you have to be at about, for us, it's about 40,000 to be eligible, and those little projects individually don't make it, so we want to fund those with reserves that we had, and then things that were funded by reserves are going to MSI. We had to tweak a few things to make it all work.
Go ahead, Counselor.
I just have a question.
Yeah.
So you said we jumped the gun on not receiving the letter. Do we know, like, for sure that the doubling is going to happen?
It's been said a number of times, but we do not have anything formal from the federal government saying your allocation next year is this. But it seems like that cat's well out of the bag, like that's the plan.
Okay, thank you.
We just looked back last week and found that, we looked at all the correspondence we could bring up, and it looks like it's going to be starting next fiscal now.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Silk?
There's a resolution to fund the Second Avenue West, Seventh to Ninth Street infrastructure upgrade products, projects with $237,000 from the federal gas tax fund and 223,000 from MSI-C. Also to fund the $10,000 concrete coring machine and the 6,500 skid steer attachments with Public Works Heavy Equipment Reserves.
Wow, you done well. You seem to like those long ones.
I'm getting blurry on it.
Okay. No questions? All in favor? Thank you. Okay, so we can adjust that budget. All right, under 7A is a recreation facility update. And I'm going to let Jeff, can I give us an update? And from there on, we'll have some things we need to consider.
Thank you. Counselors Barnes and Benge, just give me a second, I'm going to share my screen so you can see this.
I see the letter, I've got it up on my screen.
Oh, I have another presentation here that I need to share.
Thank you.
Are we here? Okay, bear with me, I'll get you going. So you should see my really complex slides that I do with all kinds of neat graphics and straight white backgrounds.
Unreal.
Oh, I tried to just minimize those guys on the right, but for some reason, they're minimized on mine, but not, well, it should be fine. I wanted to go through a few things. I have some information for council as far as some estimates on operating costs. We have some information on some revenue things, just a number of things. But when I was going through this, of course, it brings up just a lot of questions administratively. We've taken a strange road to get to where we are today with this rec facility concept. I'm just as much involved in that strange road as you are. In hindsight, I probably would have approached a few things differently, we would have gone about it a little different way, but we're here and we're fine. I've got five items that I'll get to at the very end that I'm asking for some questions from council on, and we can, I can send this out to you and we can recap it in a bit. So I just wanted to talk about major items of consideration. So that commitment of capital funds, we still need, oh, and I have the reserve listings here if we want to talk about that a little later. Location's going to play a key role in putting the capital together, depending on what we have to do with the location, operational costs I'll talk about, exploration of alternatives, and then managing expectations. And so that's, I'll try and go through reasonably quickly some of these things. Stop me at any time if you have questions. And really, it's just some observations that I have. So the commitment of capital, we still need to determine where this capital's coming from, what the impact on reserves and taxation will be, site factors that really will factor in large on the overall capital requirement for this facility. So our facility size and cost still aren't quite there, but that's okay. The tendering, when we get to a point, we'll take care of that. And we don't, I don't think, I don't want to put words in your mouth, I don't think there's a high level of confidence in our initial capital numbers at this point. I think there's still a lot to be determined there, and that's okay, we have time to do that. But we can use our initial numbers and some other existing projects for capital benchmarks, and then tendering will conclude that. So really, I think tonight, we need to spend a little time on some of the capital piece and where that money's going to come from. And so I just want to, I want to come back to this in a little bit as well. So, but I do want to talk about some initial numbers that we were starting to base capital on, and I don't want to focus too much on these because, again, the process and the tendering is going to sort this out in the end, right? But we started with Duchess at 30,000 square feet. They built that for 4.7 million, or about a buck 61 a square foot. There's some assumptions we don't know, such as all the site costs were probably already there because there was a rink there at one time. So utilities and parking and all those things were probably already done. I called the next part, the Schaefer-Hassagawa 19,000 square foot number. It was a bit of a hybrid number at about 100 bucks a square foot. And I say administrative corrections, corrections maybe isn't the right word, but our assumptions on, we know Hassagawa was leaning very conservative on electrical, mechanical, for example, site prep. So when we scrutinize that a little bit, it bumped us up to about 143 a square foot. We looked, we got some really detailed information actually from Brooks and Coldell. Brooks just completed a project a few years ago. It's huge, 79,000 square feet. I mean, it's not the same type of project. And Coldell has a proposed 54,000 square foot building, that they're working through the process right now. And just to give some idea of 220 and 243 a square foot, spread out over a lot of square footage. One building I wanted to show mostly, just because it's very interesting, is the North Red Deer YMCA. Now, this just opened in 2019, and then shortly after COVID hit, and they haven't had a full operational year yet, but it's exactly 20,000 square feet. So it's an interesting comparable, and it's all dry land. So there's no pool in it, there's no rink in it, there's nothing like that. It's a gym and multipurpose. Now, this is as neat as the graphics are going to get on my presentation for you. And again, it's just for reference, it's basically a two-story building. There's a gym on the main floor with multipurpose rooms around it, all their washrooms, all that stuff. And then there's a second story that just goes around the gym. It's only about 6,000 square feet up here. And it was an interesting one because it's a dry land comparable facility of roughly the square footage. And I just use it to show where these costs can go if you're not careful. So they opened it in July 2019. Everything cost them $8 million or $400 a square foot. Now, I can't speak to all the architecture, I can't speak to land costs or site prep or utility extension. We don't have those details, but it's just one that we've looked at as it's developed to try and understand where that can go. So just to give you an idea of what we've seen, we currently have like a $100, $400 scale spread in square foot costs that we've seen in other places. So it's just of interest more than anything. The next thing I'd like council to have some discussion on is location, because as we start to put the numbers together on the capital, we need to address issues like, is the value of the land, are we expecting that to be raised? What about site servicing? Where is the best or ultimate use of land? That's really prevalent on EJ Wood, for example. You could really ask the question if that's, is that the best use? Opportunity costs, is there something we could be doing with those pieces of land that would be generating taxation or doing things like that? And then replacing displaced infrastructure. So administratively, we've had this conversation with the Lyons Park location where the Ball Diamond is. So if this, let's say the 19,000 square foot version of the facility is to go there, do we need to be factoring in costs of replacing a ball diamond and replacing dugouts and replacing irrigation and building another ball diamond somewhere? Should those costs be factored into the cost of this one? Those are things that we can work out over time, but I just want council to be thinking of some of those things. By the way, the reason I'm bringing these up is it's really culminating in the managing expectations piece I'll get at the end, that this council is clear on what the intent is, and the next council knows what they're inheriting, and our fundraising groups know what, who their partners are and what their commitments are. Because that's ambiguous out there right now. It's not totally clear. So those are some things on location, then operational costs. So we put these together, we've had a number of versions of these over the last couple of years, but looking at operations of other town facilities, comparable buildings that we could find out there. We've been talking to, and Randy's been talking to, community groups that may want to be using the facility and understanding if there's additional revenue there, for example. We've talked to about seven of them. On our list, we had 13, but we haven't been able to get together with the last six so far. We've assumed some internal programming revenue, meaning it's revenue that we're creating the programming to generate the revenue, of course. But our total operational scope isn't quite known yet. It's not totally clear.
What's the uptake out of those seven?
So the ones, just so I'm not, so the ones we talked to, well, Randy, I shouldn't say we, I haven't talked to any of them. The ones that have been talked to so far was the, just the seniors' organization to gauge their field, spring league basketball, Selects Basketball, Wrestling Club, Mini City Gym, Minor Soccer, and volleyball. There's somebody in town who wants to have a more formalized volleyball. So we had basically what we saw out of those seven, considering a couple of things. The seniors' presidency, for example, doesn't speak for all seniors, it was just getting their opinion, so let's make that clear. But we saw that volleyball was very interested in having an enhanced facility to do programming, but their revenue contribution was frankly really low. Like, it was, I think, 800 bucks a year. Really, really low, based on what they wanted to run. And it's only because they do kind of select camps at different times of the year. They're not running a 20-week program or something like that. Selects Basketball, of course, this is Mr. Beazer, he was quite interested, and they have quite a long program. That one is a case of, a little bit a case of convenience over necessity. They have a home right now. And so it's just really the logistics of that program, and does it make sense for them to start paying for a place to play if the logistics are that much superior? Minor Soccer was not sure on the uptake on an off-season. I don't know, Counselor Brown, you're just not still on that board, are you?
Not anymore.
Yeah, I didn't think so. And I don't know who Randy talked to specifically. They said they have a, probably if, they have a good handful of kids that do play indoor soccer year-round, and you may be able to transfer some of those kids back home if they, if they could get part of that league or something like that. So that was, they were, what was his word? They weren't saying they were going to go all in with 300 kids in the off-season, let's put it that way. But there might be, I think they said two dozen, who were kind of hardcore playing year-round soccer.
I think there's 45 that travel.
Say that again, sorry.
I think there's, sorry, Mayor. I think there's 35 to 40 that travel.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And then, Spring League Basketball wasn't interested. Selects was, oh, Windy City Wrestling was not at this point interested. Windy City Gym wasn't interested. Minor Soccer, depending, they said they don't have any organized group for off-season, and they would look at it if there was some kids.
What about Kerston Support Services?
So we haven't talked to them as one of the recreation stakeholders yet. The others we have on the list is, what have we got, archery? Well, we have pickleball on this list twice, by the way, they're C and M, so we only have a dozen. They're on there twice. Pickleball, archery, we still got to talk to, yeah, archery. So we still got three or four that we need to talk to and support services. But we're just trying to pull all this together to give some idea of what our benchmark for operations could be. Everyone's throwing around some numbers of what they might be, and they might be correct, but we're just trying to get a good feel for that. We looked at communities like Duchess. We know their operating expenses were 219, they had 111,000 in revenue, leaving a net loss of 108. Now, this is, it's got to be three or four years back now, but it's relatively recent, so that's good. They do have a good revenue from schools in the area, that's making up a large portion of their revenue. Coldell, I'll jump to Coldell, they're working towards a break even in their costing models, but that's contingent on large school contribution and major commercial lease contributions. They have a six-figure commercial lease number in their revenues. They have about 10 commercial leasing spaces in the building that they're looking at. So they, and again, it's right next to the school as well, is where this is being proposed, and so there's a big school contingent. And this facility has a pool, and it has all kinds of things. Red Deer YMCA, again, just really blew us away that not only was it incredibly expensive to build, the city is putting in 800,000 annually into that building. And again, it's a dry land building. So what we don't know, because they haven't had really a good.
Year.
Full year, is what is that programming? How intensive is that programming? And so we're going to keep in communication with them. We talked to the city, we didn't talk to the YMCA. So the city contracted YMCA to operate it on their behalf. But the city said that they budgeted 800,000 a year to go to the YMCA, which we thought was quite a number, to be frank. I showed this next one, not because it's any kind of comparable scale, but one thing we've heard a lot over, well, not a lot, we've heard on occasion is that, well, you know, if you have more programming and you have more people, that they'll eventually break even. But this is the, this is a chunk out of the YMCA in Lethbridge, that beautiful facility on the west side, incredibly busy. They require 2.2 roughly million dollars worth of grants a year to break even.
Oh, gosh.
And 1.358 of that has to come from the city. And so it's not a foregone conclusion that if you make it bigger and put more people through it, that it will break even. That's just not what we're seeing, especially through the YMCA's. YMCA's are actually really good to do this because they put all their financials on the website for every facility. So you can start to get some good numbers, but, you know, that's an awesome facility on the west side of Lethbridge in almost every way. I think it's a top-notch facility, but, you know, the city alone is throwing in 1.358 just to help it break even. By the way, on everything, we used 2019 because 2020 was a weird year financially for everybody. And that's why I'll show you some town numbers here in a bit, too, that we used 2019, just because 2020 was such an anomaly. When we look at operations for the town, this is out of our audited financial statement, and the first column is budget, the second column is actual, the third column is previous year. But I put this in there just to show that Parks and Recreation is, and within a few thousand dollars here, our largest category expense in the town, with the exception of electrical distribution, but that's a bit of a different monster, because we've got margin on every one of those dollars. So I just, you know, it's important for us to keep in mind when we're looking at these expenses and overall operating costs, that we're budgeting just under $2 million a year in Parks and Recreation. Now, that includes the golf course, which is a huge chunk. But I also used 2019 to try and stay out of that anomalous year again in 2020. And so what we came up with is, now, there's a bunch of detail behind this, we can go over later, I just want you to have the context because we were talking about it a few weeks ago. When we looked at a building somewhere around that proposed size you've seen, 16 to 19, 20,000 square feet, we looked at, you know, our total programming requirement, total hours of operation, we don't really know yet. We don't have that firmly, but when we tried to do all for open this many hours a day, and, you know, we're running programming from here to here, and we try and keep one person in the building all the time that it's open, we need just under three FTEs on a year. Because this thing's year-round. So then the question was, and this number's moved a little bit, too, because we're learning a few things, but it's 2.7 FTEs, plus we can utilize somewhere probably between 600 to 1,000 hours of existing labor between different recreation and golf staff. So for example, if you have, if you have two and a half full-time equivalents at this facility, well, they probably want to take some vacation, or they're going to get sick, or they're going to have, you know, logistical issues, they can't make it a day. So we'd pull in somebody from the rink or the golf course or something like that. Now, one of the things we learned since we did this very first is, we've had a full year with our superintendent at the golf course, and he did not have hardly any extra hours in the off-season. So he did 2,080 hours in the peak season because he works, you know, seven days a week. And so we don't have as many excess hours there, and we don't know with our golf pro yet because he's only been with us for a couple of months, but we're making an assumption that there's probably somewhere between six and 1,000 hours of existing labor. We contacted some stakeholders re-revenue. Our revenue projection on this is still pretty, let's call it, conservative. You know, we, JD has a whole breakdown of it, and I need to go into a spreadsheet, but it, you know, we don't have $100,000 of revenue at this. And we're seeing the facilities that do have school or other agreements. Didsbury, for example, has over 100,000, but they have four school divisions that Didsbury, for example, has over a hundred thousand, but they have four school divisions that use the pool there for curriculum, as an example. So our current estimate is an operational loss of about a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, and I want to be clear that that is, it's really loose, because if all of a sudden we say, well, we're gonna only open this thing ten hours a day, well, that estimate's on fifteen. And if we're only going, you know, we just don't know yet, we gotta still figure all that out. But I just wanted to give you a number that we felt was consistent with what we were seeing in the estimates of other communities and of similar-sized facilities. Coldale did an excellent job, cause they're going, they're trying to raise money for theirs right now. And Coldale did an excellent job of breaking down their staffing requirements, their revenue requirements, and we were able to learn a lot from, from them as well. And other communities have been very good about giving us information, so that's the number, uh, just to, to consider when we're looking at, uh, potentially looking at operations. And this will develop as this thing goes on. The other thing I wanna jump to is exploration of options. Now, Mr. Williams gave a presentation a while ago, gave a presentation, and in both those presentations, there was this idea of, well, maybe there's, there's synergies, there's partnerships that can happen in utilization of existing programming, infrastructure, things like that, but that hasn't, how do I wanna put this, council has not given us as administration any direction to say, let's really aggressively pursue these first, or to at least know where they stand. We, we have done some pursuit, very basic. So for example, we talked to the LDS Church FM group, and met with them and said, where do you think this is going with the churches in our area? Where do you see, for example, we use specifically pickleball, but where do you see that going in the churches? And we've looked at this integration with the golf course as another idea. You know, what if it's eight thousand square feet on the golf course, and it's now the Golf and Racket Club, for example? Um, there's options to talk to the Silk Purse, there's options to use this building, the civic center here, if we could, but we don't know what's going on with some of like gymnastics and theater and those kinda things. So one of the things you'll see in my recommendations is, and, and the answer might be that there isn't a resolution, but there, my recommendation is to make a resolution if you wish as a council collectively to direct administration to explore alternatives. Just to sn- even, even if just to know if, what our options are. If nothing else, we just know what our options are. And they may be what we have to use in the short term. So those may be our options for the next year or two, and then, then it transitions to something else. So you'll see one of my recommendations is to give a little clearer direction to administration on the exploration of, of other options. And then managing expectations, now this is, I wanna be careful with this slide, because it's really my observations, so please don't take it as any kind of criticism of where we're at. I'm just as much a part of this, uh, and I'm as responsible for where we are. But right now, as we sit today, the Pickleball Association is, is applying for, I put has applied, that's not true. They are applying for the Large Stream CFEP, investigating other grants, donations, as they should, as they said they would, that's a good thing. And they do want a letter of support from the town for these grants. Um, and I, and I think that we have to really be aware and cautious of what does that letter say? And that you saw in your background, I put some letters that I gave to Mr. Beazer to give me feedback on, I don't have that formal feedback yet. But um, I know he emailed me on Tuesday and said, we need a letter for a grant by Friday, and I said, well, what do you want the grant to say? Or what do you want the letter to say? And he said, well, it needs to say you got a million dollars in cash for this facility. I said, but I can't say that, Brad. You know, it's not that I don't want to say that, but I can't say it. And he told me what the grant was, and actually the deadline is not for another three weeks, and so I said, can you see if this can be bumped for, you know, three weeks, and then we can have some discussion at council.
Jeff, can I ask you something? Regarding those grants, the Rotary had applied for a grant, not of that magnitude, but a fairly large grant. Didn't they have in-kind
For?
The town inside?
For what project, Mayor?
I'm sorry?
For what project?
The Project Alliance Park.
Oh, the spray park?
No, 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 the, the, the bubble, the, the play structure. The one that-
Oh, the playground?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, there was all kind, it was made up of a, a number of-
Because it seems to me the town gave a lot of in-kind inside that project.
Yep. Yeah.
So it's not uncommon to have in-kind
No.
when you apply for grants.
No.
Am I correct?
No, and when I met with Mr. Beazer, he understood that totally and, and was very open to considering that.
Alright.
We just haven't had that final discussion yet, so one of the things when I talk about managing expectations is you've got a group out here that's, that's got a pretty clear message. Uh, cause you can go hear it on the street, really wherever you want, that the town's putting a million dollars into a rec facility, and we're gonna turn a shovel ASAP. That's the message. And then you have this other contingent in the community saying, well, is council just kind of abdicating this whole facility to this group? And, and, and do they get to drive the bus on this thing now, and, and what's happening? I hear that one a lot, that's the one I can't go get groceries without being hit up about this darn thing, and you probably can't either.
Yeah.
And somewhere in the middle is, I think we have an opportunity to clarify that, these letters are gonna do that to some degree. Um, I just worry that this next council is in a difficult position if those raising funds are saying, hey, soon as we hit this certain number, this thing's happening. And that next council is thinking, oh, man, you know, this is, this is a tough position for us to be in. And council, you, right now, continue to have very little discretion into what's being fundraised for. We've heard in the last month that this thing is maybe twenty-four thousand square feet, but maybe not, and it, and, and we know that we've had a presentation from Dr. Clark, that it could be a partnership between any, any number of people, that that would be satisfactory to that group specifically, but maybe not to the community collectively. It doesn't satisfy the need, we don't know. We've been told that there's a need, or at least a facility deficiency, that we don't have enough facility to accommodate X activity, we've been told that, but we don't have a lot of evidence to support it, because we need to investigate it a little further. And then I just, I mentioned already this contingent that feel that maybe as a town, we've abdicated this massive capital project with massive operational implications a little bit. And so I think we can get all, I think we can get around that, I think we can get back in front of the messaging on it. You know, I don't think we're, we're not too far gone by any means. So this takes me to my administrative recommendations, and you don't have to take any of these, by the way, but I'm putting them out there for your consideration from my point of view in helping with this project. One is, let's try and determine the most appropriate site, so that we can do a firm analysis of what that site will take to have it ready for such a facility, because that time isn't upon us now. We don't have to have that number tomorrow, but it's inevitably, we have to have that number at some point. Because if that number's a hundred thousand or five hundred thousand, it matters a bunch to those raising the money. That was a good discussion that Brad Beazer and I had about, we really do have to determine if that's the expectation of the town, the council, that that has to be raised, or is the town gonna eat some of that, we're gonna do what we can, you know, when, when we can? Those are all on the table. Uh, we just, I, it would be helpful that, that will help us shape some of the costs. The other one is make a resolution to or to not, explore partnership options for pickleball particularly. And then determine an operational loss tolerance threshold, and, and this is a little more complicated, but I think it's important if the community knows that you have a, y- you have a threshold. So I do not put all of my uh eggs in the survey basket, but just hear me out for a minute on this. Your survey indicated that forty-nine percent of residential properties wouldn't tolerate any increase for this facility, and twenty percent would be comfortable at less than or equal to fifty dollars. So you're sixty-nine percent of the population. The business community, though, was even higher, fifty-seven percent said not above nothing, they wanted zero, and nineteen percent said e- less than or equal to fifty dollars, so now you're at, again, an even higher number, seventy-eight percent that aren't very comfortable with a greater than fifty-dollar threshold. That current proposed operational loss of a hundred and sixty-seven, simply divided over taxable properties is ninety-seven bucks a property. And that's not within, that's not considering assessment of any of them, that's just saying a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars divided by, I think it was fifteen-hundred and something properties. So that's something we, well, I guess it had to be a little over that, but that's something that you have to consider, too, is that are you comfortable with that number?
But when you spoke earlier, you said that that a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars was a pretty loose-
It is, it is, yeah, the programming of this is loose.
Yeah, a lot of things have to be determined, size and all that kinda stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I just-
No, I totally agree, Counsel Drew, we're, we're trying to establish an operational budget on something that's still really hypothetical.
Don't know, yeah.
We tried to be, I will say, we really tried to be on, a- and, and I hope it comes across that way, I hope it doesn't look like we were trying to make the number excessive. You know, I think, I think if you told anyone that you would have a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollar loss on a twenty thousand square foot year-round facility, it's pretty good. And most places would show that, you know, depending on your revenues, definitely depending on revenues. So we didn't, we tried to be realistic, where I wasn't just feeding you numbers you wanted to hear. So there's a whole spreadsheet behind that number that shows if you're open this many hours, and this is the utilities, and this is the insurance, and this is da-da-da-da-da-da-da-da, it's, it's all supported by good numbers. Um, but, but yes, Counsel, if we decide that, you know what, this thing's gonna be open eight hours a day, and that's it, you know, this thing's gonna be a twelve-to-eight building, and we're gonna do one shift a day, and this is, fine, we can adjust it, but we, we're not there yet.
Yeah, exactly.
But your community is curious, let's put it that way. They're, they're very much wondering how this will impact them.
Counsel, so?
Um, I have a couple of questions, Jeff. So with your a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven, months ago, you finding efficiencies with your own budget to the tune of about fifty-seven thousand dollars, is that included in there?
So it's only, we did it at, oh, sorry, Counsel, let me go back. I'm at about between twenty-one and thirty-five thousand of that. And again, that was because the, when we did this, uh, it's probably been a year now, probably. Uh, we were looking at, okay, how much excess time, for example, does Miles have in the off-season, how many hours? How many will Paul have? How many, you know, so we were looking at that. What we found with Miles in his first year was that there wasn't excess, so I've taken him out of it to some degree. And I've just looked and said, okay, if I got two and a half FTEs, it's a little more than that, and they take X amount of days off for sick, vacation, so much a year, can we fill that internally, hypothetically, mathematically, can we fill it internally? And how many hours a year would that look like? So the other thing, too, is we've contracted another position within the organization after Bart passed away, and so it's not, we, we have less excess, I shouldn't even say we had excess labor, we'll be doing less, but I have, I have a little bit less there. So it's not the big number that it used to be, Counselor, because we learned some stuff after Miles' first year. And depending on the, how that facility goes and operates, that may have been flow as well. That's, that's a really difficult, it's been a difficult number to, uh, to nail down, too. Um, so sorry, I can't be a little more concrete on that one, Counselor, but uh, yes, it's considering still a good chunk of that number. For sure.
And in your conversations with the FM group?
Yeah.
What did they say going forward?
So I forget the gentleman's name, I wanna say his last name was Gibb.
Yeah, yeah, you're correct.
Okay, so it's just been a, it's been a month or so. His position was that they felt that pickleball was an appropriate activity in the LDS churches, and that their renovations would include putting the lines in for that activity in the churches. Now, he was not comfortable right now saying, you know, we want organized groups, we don't wanna open it up to spring league basketball, we don't, they're, they're not comfortable there. So we had offered that if, if this was something they were comfortable with, would they look at maybe designating one building in the community that would, maybe we'd have less funerals at it, for example, or we'd have less other activities during the day, and does the town need to put up some type of liability policy for the people using it as a recreation facility, not as a worship facility? And that we would sponsor that recreation activity and ensure it for if somebody burns a place down or gets injured, they, that they, they would not be sued as a church, that would be on us, and he wasn't prepared to speak to that, he was gonna talk to, um, they have a meeting with Salt Lake, he said, once a month, and he'd be bringing that up. But he said it's their intention in the south to accommodate that activity in the LDS churches. Now, each of your stakes have discretion there?
Right.
Right, and so just because Mr. Gibb says so, does not make it so.
Right.
Not by any means, that's a meeting that would need to happen with the respective stakes, with the FM group, and talk about how that plays out. This is, we, it's very preliminary, Counsel, we didn't dive deep into it, we just, it was just a conversation with Mr. Gibb at this point. But they, he said to expect that the, the lines will be, starting to be put in the buildings as the floors are redone. Which was interesting.
What, what did you say, sorry?
That they're gonna start putting those lines in as they redo the floors?
Right.
So, but again, from a logistical point of view, no idea, no idea yet.
Right, because in the states are doing that already.
Yeah.
The interesting thing, though, is that with respect to church use, and it might have to be a formal agreement, as you suggested, because currently, it's whoever has a calling that has a key.
Yeah, that's right.
Gets access, and everybody else gets shut out, right?
Yep, totally agree.
And there's a number of people that play sports that aren't necessarily comfortable with being in the church.
Yep.
And the whole notion of this was, you know, I'll speak strictly from a personal point of view, and I'm, I'm probably more interested in the walking track than playing pickleball. But that's just me, but anyway. I'm uh, I'm curious, Jeff, to, I know you said you haven't had a chance to speak with them, but I would be really curious to know what Parks and Support Services feelings are, cause when we talked to them before, they seemed very interested in being able to have their clients go there and use the facility. And obviously, they have a number of clients, and they're kind of a big deal in town, so to speak.
Yeah, yeah, no, they may be a great revenue partner, we just, we're, we're not there on them yet. Um, so those are, those are three, I have two more recommendations. Uh, and by the way, again, I'll say, th- these aren't to be dealt with all tonight, I don't expect that that's gonna come around. Um, uh, one is work with administration to formulate letter for grants and fundraising. I, I think that's just something, we gotta make sure the wording's right on that, that's a pretty minor issue. I'm expecting Brad to come to me with a new deadline for the letter, and I'd like him to write to council of exactly what they're looking for, but I, I haven't, I talked to him last Tuesday, and then we talked on the phone for a while, and then we were emailing back and forth that afternoon, and then I, I haven't heard from him, uh, since, so I'm waiting to hear from him again.
Can, can I ask you then? You had a meeting and you presented those two types of letter?
Yep.
Okay. And uh, Brad seemed to understand the idea of mixing the sources?
Yeah, when we met in person, he was very much understood all these other pieces cost money, and that that was reasonable to anticipate, but he hadn't talked to his group at all, fair enough.
Okay.
But then when he phoned me Tuesday, he wanted the letter just to be only cash.
Okay, so uh, the issue for us then is to determine if that's only cash, is where the only pocket of money is, which is nowhere else but reserves.
Right now, that's where you're at, yeah.
Right?
Yep.
And to me, that's concerning, very concerning.
So I did bring, and I, sorry, I didn't hand it up before, I did bring um, the reserves listing again, if you wanna talk about that some more tonight. And we can have some of that conversation. My last, my last recommendation is just a consideration. And it's considering operational funding to come from offsetting existing expenses. And I gave some examples, and I'm not even, I'm not suggesting any of these, I'm just giving an example. If it's the feeling of this council, and there's evidence to support it, well, I guess even if it's just a feeling of this council, that an indoor rec facility of this scale is the recreation priority of the community, then maybe it needs to come at the expense of other things we currently do. So the approximate loss of the pool and rink combined is two hundred thousand a year. That would cover potentially the operating loss of a rec facility. But then we need to start consulting with those stakeholders to talk about that. Or the golf course, for example, we're, we're budgeting a hundred thousand dollar operating loss, a ninety thousand dollar capital spend, and planned capital spending of a million dollars in the next two years, that we'll, we will never get that money back from the golf course over, well, maybe over a super-long period of time, but last year, remember, was a real anomaly from a revenue point of view. We're budgeting losses at that facility. So there's places that maybe it needs to be one or the other, but that'll be up for you to decide. And then I put other programming, staffing levels, other things we run. And then we should commence some stakeholder consultation to see how that would go over. Um, the problem is none of us are armed, nobody in here is armed with the information to say that the community generally deems this more important than this. No, nobody has that, and I don't even know that you'd ever get that. I don't know how you would get that.
Are we not even sure what's the appetite for a large building is, or a smaller building is? We don't even know.
Yeah. Yeah, because it is kind of all relative to people because we don't, we can't say, here's the exact programming of this facility and exactly how, look, we're just not there yet. So I just throw that out for your consideration. There's no action that needs to come from that, but as we discuss, if you're looking to mitigate the impact on budget. Then one of the ways you may have to do that is reducing the spend in other areas. And those are just a couple of, let's call it low hanging fruit, that the golf course or the pool rink combination would probably cover that. But you have a whole bunch of stakeholders that'll want to talk to you about that, let's put it that way. That's for sure. So it's just something to consider. So I just, I'll go over just one more time, determine the site that'll help us with costs for the pickleball group, that'll help get, help us give them better costs onsite. Make a resolution to or not explore partnership options. I didn't want, I've spent some time on that administratively, but it wasn't supported by a resolution of council. It was just a theme that came up at a couple of meetings, let's put it that way. So I want to be cautious with spending too much time on that. Uh, determine an operational loss tolerance threshold. So for example, said, okay, only gonna be okay with fifty dollars average per property, well, that changes dramatically, potentially even the capital of this building. It may, it may, it may not. Uh, work to formulate letter for grants and fundraising and then consider operational funding to come from offsetting other expenses. Those are just some things, counsel, that have been on my mind about this facility. It's what I'm hearing. I'm trying to look at ways to get out in front of the. The expectations of different groups in the community on this. You know, I talked to Brad or I talked to people from the pickleball group and, and. Uh, a month ago, we were breaking ground, June first, depending on who you talk to, right? And, and so I understand there's some excitement there, I get it, it's warranted. So we just, we gotta work through a couple of those things. So those are the five things I put forward to you for consideration. I don't expect that we delve into them all tonight, by the way. I just, uh, I think it's something we can stop or start to pick away at.
Can, can I maybe ask then, there is one. One of your items, I think it was item two. To allow you to pursue formally, uh, the. Possibility of looking at, even if it's for short time result. At partnering with other groups. I had heard around the table, some desire to, to see some partnering. Ex- explore the idea, even if it creates some, uh. Space for the winter time, winter months. For at least some of those groups who feel that just do not have that ability. To do what they want to do in the winter. So I personally would appreciate at least an exploration, it doesn't cost us nothing. And to understand a little bit more, what are the possibilities? And what does that mean for us? It doesn't mean that we let go of a bigger commitment, but that would be a short term commitment. That may be one easy one to kind of deal with. And so I don't know how, how you feel, Counselor Drew, I see yourself nodding, would you like exploring?
I think, I think we should, I think we should exhaust that kind of stuff, not saying that we're not gonna build something, but.
Right, exactly.
Maybe we're gonna build something different because we find a home for.
Right.
Pickleball or whomever, right? I think that's, I mean.
Counselor Brown, what's your feeling?
No, I'm, I think we've talked about that previously around the table. I feel like. I mean, I can only speak for myself, but I feel that partnership options in the running of the building, in before we get the building, partnerships are great.
Yeah.
So I have no problem making a resolution, if you'd like me to. I make a resolution to find out, uh, to find partnership options for us, for the rec facility and. And uses before our rec facility starts.
Okay, so Counselor Cole.
I could support that, but I want to make it clear that it has to be all groups.
Uh, yeah.
Not just this group, that group or whatever, it's probably every, it's a community facility for everybody in the facility, in the community.
Just so I'm clear, Counselor Court, so I understand, are you suggesting that the partnership has to accommodate everyone?
I'm suggesting that it needs to accommodate those that we've already talked about, young mothers, walking track, things like that. I don't think you can put it into the United Church gym, for example, and.
Oh, agreed, yeah.
Do, do it justice. I'm sorry I came in late on this discussion.
No, we, we have not started to discuss, counselor.
Kind of caught to talk about the churches a little bit and that's just kind of surprised me that they would even consider us doing that.
Agreed.
Me too.
But I, I have no problem looking at.
Options.
Options.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I understand we're not gonna have this thing in the ground probably even in the fall, as much as people would like to.
Uh, to tell you the truth, from the source I have in the states. The churches are converting all their gyms to accommodate pickleball.
Seriously?
And in Utah, it's a new fad.
Are you talking about here, are you talking about in Utah?
Uh, it's in Utah, but it's, it's the same kind of, kind of thing that realize that this community, those community. Are embracing that new kind of activity. Yeah.
Right, just.
But just to be clear, we're not building a pickleball facility, we're building a recreation center. And so if I understand what Counselor Court is saying in my motion, that's why, I do want that clear, that, that we are. Our goal is to, apparently we're shutting down.
Apparently, this conversation's over, counselor.
Right, but just, just wanted to make sure that my motion is clear, stipulating that in fact, we want a rec center. We want this, um.
Community to use.
Yeah, community. It's all about community. So when we're talking to, when we're talking to the pickleballers, we're also talking to many other areas. Many other groups so that we can have areas in which to have, uh, buildings for them before we get a rec.
Okay, Counselor South, thank you.
Okay, I just need clarification, Mayor.
Go ahead.
So your motion is that we're exploring partnerships for a rec center.
Correct.
And we'll see where that leads us. Now, I just want to back the bus up a little bit, because. What got us here is we made a motion that we were going to set aside money. And in the motion, it said a million dollars so that the fundraisers could go and explore all their options. Now, I, I appreciate all the work you've done with this, Jeff, because you're right, there's, it's bringing some clarity to this. But what's, I guess, sort of troubling to me is that I think that the fundraisers need to be included in the conversation with respect to. Ongoing operational costs too. It's like, this is capital we've talked about. For us, our, our commitment and capital for them, but I think we also need to include them in the, hey, you know what? You guys need to come up with some way of figuring out and helping us figure out the costs for the ongoing operation of this building.
Wow. You're asking for something that I may commit one year, but. How can they commit any further than one year when the building becomes the town responsibility? And therefore they can divest themselves of that obligation very rapidly.
Yeah, but if they have, uh.
That's what my concern is, right?
They have a fund set aside from.
It's connecting now.
The interest off of, for the ongoing operating costs as well.
I mean, I don't say that you can find a model of financing that might allows you to get some money. Like a trust fund that makes money towards, towards, uh, paying for operation, I mean, sure. But that, I mean, they need, they need to raise a heck of a lot of money in order to be able to, to do that. I mean, that requires a huge trust fund.
Not saying that they need to cover it all. What I'm suggesting is that they need to be part of the conversation and see if they have the stomach for that as well.
I mean, that's, that's no doubt a valued idea. I mean, what we need to remember is that one percent of taxation is twenty eight thousand dollars. So every time you have twenty eight thousand multiplied by whatever, that's how much percentage of tax you need to increase in order to recoup that money. Right? So that's something important to remember too.
I know when we're talking with those fundraising folks. You know, they also have strong opinions about the ongoing operating costs and volunteering and helping out in that regard as well. And I know that that's. A big, yeah, what if or a question mark, but it's. A valid option with respect to the operating costs. Now, having said all that. I'm assuming, Jeff, at some point in time, you want us to determine what kind of a letter we're sending, because you sent us a couple of options.
Well, I was hoping by today, I was hoping by Friday, I would have heard from Brad say, hey, we're very comfortable, we've talked to our grant people. We're, we're fine with this plus all the other costs, but I, I haven't heard from him yet, unfortunately. That, I don't have a lot to add to that piece, because I haven't talked to him.
All right, because I, because I know the last time we talked to you, you, I think the instruction from council was. See what the fundraisers.
Yep.
What their stomach is with respect to, is it this or is it the?
Yeah, and I met with Brad and we've sat down and I. That original MOU we drafted to see if we want to get that formal. And so we just haven't had a chance to get that. Formally get his feedback on that yet, let's put it that way.
So in other words, we don't need to necessarily push the send button on either one of these.
Because when he first talked to me too, he was needing a letter like ASAP.
Right.
And then I emailed him, well, I said, we, like I said, we talked Tuesday and then we emailed back and forth saying, look, Friday's gonna be tricky, because I don't have a council meeting and which one do you want and? So, but then when I looked at the grant, they were applying for the deadlines, June fifteenth.
Okay, so there's some, I know they've got a grant writer that's working on their behalf and they want to have it to the grant writer. A week to ten days in advance, so, but we still have a CCW on the first of June.
Yeah, and even if there's a formal motion on the next one, they'll be, it'd only be, I think the June first is a Tuesday, isn't it?
Yep.
It's really close, so even by the eighth, they'd be a week ahead, so I'm, I'm just hoping to hear from Brad.
Right, yeah, I would like to hear from Brad too.
Counselor Cole.
This may not be appropriate in the middle of a motion here, but, uh, and I saw I missed some council meetings, it's been kind of a crappy month. But, um, the last time I left, from what I remember anyhow, and I might be way behind on this by now. We had passed a motion of a million dollars. And then we were gonna set that aside and the fundraisers would have an ear to raise their million dollars.
Okay.
Or whatever they're gonna make, can I finish?
Yeah, go ahead.
And so, whatever they're gonna raise, and if they couldn't raise it, then that was it, that's a done deal. I didn't hear any, no, I, I've been hearing this through the grapevine, there's been suggestions of arbitrary land costs and instead of the million dollars, we'll knock off this for that. Or, or, or raise, or work in kind, arbitrary work in kind. And again, I might be behind on this, but to me that just undercuts fundraisers, um. They, they're feeling a reliability from us if we're saying, okay, well, there might be, we said a million, but it might only be five hundred thousand cash. That's one thing that kind of concerns me.
Okay.
And again, I may be behind on that, but that's.
All right. Counselor, I appreciate your concern. The reason. That we are here discussing that is because we have passed a budget. That was a very tight budget. And as if you could see, when you got the reserve list and you might not have been there, when that was passed. You tell me where you can find more money, because everything that has to come. Will have to come from that pool of money. We have some extremely important projects that need to come. And it is, in my opinion, not correct. To say we have reserves in a public works to do an upgrade to a soup plant. And I'll say, folks, guess what? We want that money for, uh, the fundraiser. Because, and now we're going to borrow money that we short. It doesn't, it doesn't seem that it would go very well with our taxpayers. Who, in all fairness, put that money so that we could do those big projects. So, right now, we don't know the size of the project, we don't know the total cost of the project, we don't know anything really. Except that we're basing it on nineteen thousand square feet and we're not even sure that that is what is going to end up by being. And as I said earlier, when you write a grant. Everything equates to cash. That it is true cash or that it is a value in cash, but it's in kind. It's looked at the same way by those who grant you money. It does not look any less. So we can only do what we can. When we say one million dollar. That was no longer sources where it was coming from, because we had to establish a budget and the budget tells us, where is the money?
What gives a community value?
The value to have, as Counselor Brown said. A toilet that flushes properly and doesn't come and mess up the house.
That the only thing that gives a community any kind of value?
That is definitely before a rec center are saying.
Be your opinion, I believe that there's mental health issues out there that we need to address. Flushing a toilet might make you happy, but may not be addressing all of your mental health issues. I think we need to move forward as a community and not stick the roads and sewers the whole time. We have a hard enough time attracting people to this community and keeping the community vibrant. And if all we're gonna do is put much money into, into the toilets, into the sewers and in the roads. We're missing the boat somewhere.
But Counselor, we have a population that has grown more without all that than ever in the past. Five years, and the census shows that. Yes?
Right. Mayor, I'm gonna ask you this question directly, okay?
Well, I don't know if you want to ask me a question, I will try to answer it, because.
In all of the lectures that we've received from you on governance. Isn't there a portion in your Maggie's Rules of Governance that says when you make a motion, you should stick to the intent of the motion and not fiddle faddle with it after the fact?
Okay, Counselor, you are trying to address my honesty or my integrity. I'm going to tell you what I'm going to, to. And I told you that before. My allegiance is to the taxpayers in this town, not to the pickleball association. I'm sorry.
No one said that.
But that's what you're referring to. The motion is to satisfy the pickleball fundraisers group. And I admire what they're trying to do, don't get me wrong. I admire what they're trying to do, because every town needs champions for projects. And I respect them very much. But I also want them to respect us, knowing that as a council, we have to control the purse. That is sacred money to me. I told you that too. Taxpayer is as sacred to me as what we give to the church.
Okay, well, let's talk dollars and cents then, okay?
Well, we can do that if you want.
In our audited financial statement that we just, uh, passed a couple of weeks ago. In, uh, twenty twenty, we budgeted thirteen million, five hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and four dollars. We actually spent twelve million, forty one, uh, forty one thousand, six hundred and, so there's one point four million dollars someplace. That we didn't spend last year.
It's a fair question for administration.
Okay. I don't have the audited financial statement in front of me, counsel. But, well, I don't know that the court lines will do it. So your budget's made up of thousands of items. And so if expenses are down, revenues may also have been, for example. Um, I can't, I'm trying to think what that creek work project did as far as the budget, if it came in well under. So we present, I, I guess, let. Sorry, I'm on the spot, I'm trying to collect my thoughts. We presented you the audited financial statement and exactly what was going into every reserve account a few months ago, and so any surplus is there. That's where it is. But when we looked at the reserve accounts last time, nobody, I had zero recommendations from council on where we were going to get the million dollars. And I'd welcome it, but it's gotta be your decision. I'll take you so far. I'll take you so far, but then you're making some tough decisions out of the reserve accounts. So.
This reserve account listing that you gave us, Jeff, that we agreed to, at the end of the day there, there was five million, six hundred and fifty four thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. And then we took one point one million dollars out of that and stuck it into major capital for the wastewater treatment plant, which then brought our numbers down to four million, one hundred and twenty four thousand, five hundred and thirty two dollars.
That sounds right.
So, I, I'd like to suggest that between the one point four million that we didn't spend last year and what we have in reserves, I think there's money there to make a commitment.
Well, could the administration, I give, I mean, you need a little time to review all that and be able to tell us next council.
So, I'm, I'm going to push back a little, mayor, because I did this a few weeks ago. Council, you need to make the decision of where that reserve money is coming from.
And he's absolutely right.
And, and like I said, I showed you in rec reserves, we had four hundred and twelve or something, and then after this year, I want to say five seventy seven, sorry again, I'm shooting from the hip a little bit on. You have full discretion over the reserve accounts. It's yours, you can do whatever you like.
So, mayor, I'm just gonna, and Jeff's absolutely right, and I appreciate, you know, his position on this, because he's right, it's our decision to make. And I'll just give you a couple of for instances. In our audited financial statement, the amount that we budgeted versus what we spent, uh, there's about a hundred and, almost a hundred and eighty four thousand dollars there between legislative, administrative and by law enforcement, that in my mind, it's like, well, it must have gone somewhere, so you could add that to five hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars. And you're getting closer. So, rather than put Jeff on the spot, I think you're probably right, mayor. We should probably look through these numbers again, look through the reserves, and then I just want some answers to some, where did the one point four million dollars go?
Fair enough, counselor. Fair enough.
If I may, just to get it off my chest, I, I get a little tired getting associated with the pickleball guys all the time. I, I don't even, I don't even think of them when I'm talking rec center, they're part of it. But the continuity harp on pickleballers, and all you're thinking about is them, it's not correct, mayor, but that's not what we're thinking.
Why is that not correct? Because they are the organization that are behind.
But I'm not doing this for them.
Yeah, but they are, they are the face of it, right? So, I mean, that, what do you want me to refer them to?
Well, just to clarify, mayor, if I might, um, Brad is actually the one that's the fundraising sort of, the one who's spearheading this. I'm not sure that Brad's ever played pickleball in his life, so.
Okay, so counselor Sark, can I maybe suggest, and when the terms were made, we should have been maybe officially made aware of those changes. One time I skipped, one time was Dr. Clark, now I skip, you know, it's difficult to keep track of what you guys are doing, honestly.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Now you're saying, you guys, you're rolling me into that same hole.
You're a member of that organization, don't you?
Uh, mostly my wife. I just want to walk on a walking track.
Yeah, well.
Have a pace to go in the winter time.
Anyway, so let's, let's, can we just take a step back and Jeff, what, what do you need from us tonight and what do you want to suggest?
There's a motion on the table, by the way. So, can we deal with that? Counselor Bengri wants, uh, wants to speak.
Did we not pass a reservation for the, uh, pass the mill rate budget?
That's already done, yes, counselor.
That's right. So now, what are we, what are we going back and reviewing? What budgets are we going back to review?
Okay, not, okay, counselor Bengri, can I help you a little bit there?
You both.
Okay, the budget has been passed, what has not been allocated is a pool of money that is called reserves. If you want to call it so, there is a certain amount, there were in specific reserves. But there is a pool of reserve money that is there to, or be applied against capital project as the sewer plant or the rec facility or whatever. If you take money from this reserve and apply it to another reserve, this is the issue right now. Because right now, in, in a capital, uh, right now, in cash money towards that million dollar, we only have about six hundred and some odd, maybe five hundred ninety thousand left, because we had to take the MSI out. And there are some projects that need to be done with that money of that reserve that were on a parks and rec master plan, and we already cut it in half for this year. So, there is a shortage of about four hundred thousand dollars or so.
What's the sewer line doing?
What's it, sorry?
The sewer line doing, that we're doing right now, dominate after rude.
Oh, the twinning?
Yeah.
The sewer line, the twinning is a different project, it was funded, fully funded. I'm talking about the upgrade to the sewer plant.
Listening to a conversation with tin cans and a string.
Okay, so it's, uh, it deserves a little bit more scrutiny of the money in the budget. Okay, so we have a motion there that was that was to explore alternate, thank you, uh, ways. And counselor Cole, to go back to, uh, what you specified, what the conversation was, and maybe you didn't catch it, it was to find solution that would be short term, that are not specifically the large project we're talking about. Is that people in the winter time, without having a new facility in place.
This winter.
Still want to be able to have places to be able to do their exercise and whatever. Is to offer more solutions rather than.
That's where I came in on the conversation.
Okay, so that's maybe the little bit that you missed. So that was really the idea, it was not to be able to, uh, to, to, uh, take away the idea of a bigger facility. It was a short time.
Definitely was not.
Here, if I might, call the question on the resolution.
Because honestly, that, that became a little bit of a complicated story. So, all in favor?
There you go.
Um, counselors Bangry and Barnes, I'll get this to you tomorrow. I did bring copies of that pro forma twenty twenty one reserve listing, so what it's telling you is, based on what you taxed this year, this is what we think the balances of all the reserve accounts will be at the end of the year. So that's with the list you should be pulling from.
Right.
Okay, now, one other thing I will throw out, because I would be lying if I told you I didn't have a schedule that would show you how to get to a million dollars. I'm just loathe to present it. But what it consists of.
Make our own decision.
Yes, I want, you do have to make those decisions. But I'll tell you what we did to try and ease it. Oh heck, I'm going to end up just showing you, hold on. Because.
Yeah.
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 I, I have a detailed reserve listing as of December thirty first, twenty twenty, is that the one you're referring to?
That's the one.
This, this is twenty one, so it includes what you're taxing this year, I'll get it to you, counselor.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just show you some wording. Hawk and I went through this and said, okay, if council basically says, Jeff, give us a million dollars at council meeting right now, we can do it. But it's a bit different than, what it's doing is we, I'll show you, we, I even wrote the dang resolution. What the resolution would say is to transfer money that exists in here, so we use the word transferring, for example, four hundred and twelve thousand from this to this and so forth. Uh, earmark, um, money that, that would be in twenty twenty two's budget. So, what it would be is that as of January fir-, well, as of mill rate time twenty twenty two, it would be solidified. So we were getting to a million dollars by saying, for example, we would transfer four hundred and twelve thousand from the recreation master plan reserves. That was your balance as of December thirty first, twenty twenty, okay? We would allocate a hundred and sixty five thousand of the twenty twenty one transfer to recreation master plan. We would earmark two hundred and sixty five thousand of the twenty twenty two recreation master plan, well, if you're doing the math in your head, we're already in the eight hundreds. By saying, we in our operational, three-year operational budget, intended to tax this in twenty twenty two, and could we earmark it now? You may not be comfortable with that, we were just trying to find a way to get to, to this number without impacting some of the existing projects. And then it went through, it's actually made up of one, two, three, four, five, six, eight, nine, ten, fourteen, fifteen accounts. And a couple of it was to transfer the balance, some of it was to, uh, allocate this year's taxation towards it, and some of it was to earmark what we're planning in the twenty twenty two budget to get to the million. So I just throw that out, that if we find ourselves next week, let's say at CCW, where we're just a couple hundred or a hundred and fifty thousand dollars away or something like that, you may want to consider that in March, April of twenty twenty two, when you set mill rate then, that the budget would be built around this allocation of the twenty twenty two taxation as well. It doesn't give them the number that they need today, but it does say that council has committed through the following, you know, to get to this million.
Counselor.
It's a hybrid.
So, through my reading, the other day to prepare for this meeting, you had a letter to the pickleball association saying that we had five hundred and ninety thousand, and then we had land and so is, is that something, Tim, that you're having a hard time with?
Yes.
Is it, or, and my other question, okay, that's good, because I, I need to kind of know that, because I wasn't sure kind of where that was going. But in this case, where we've made up that million dollars in kind and land and services and money, is that going to stifle the ability to raise money for the project for this association?
So Brad, when I left his office, was going to talk to the grant writer to see if that was a disadvantage to them in any way. His initial feeling is that it probably was not. And if it is not, I'm going to be honest, you're pretty much there.
If, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, and, and now, in that letter, by the way, my numbers around the land val-, I don't know what they are yet. But, but I, I just said, hey, we could give you something that would be constructed kind of like this, but does that put you at a distinct disadvantage? And he said, you know, I, his comment, and I'm, I'm paraphrasing, so Brad, when you listen to this, I, I'm paraphrasing. But, uh, is that they totally understand those costs have to be allocated to the project. And whether those costs have to be raised in cash or the town contributes them, may have the same net effect on the project. And so he was definitely open to exploring it further. And if that's the case, and you got to find five hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars in cash, you're done. You're there.
Yeah, and I'm okay with that, I just want to make sure it doesn't.
I just haven't heard formally back from Brad.
Thank you, counselor, that's exactly what my concern.
Yeah, I was thinking that that's where you were heading down, so I just wanted.
Can I make a comment?
Okay, can you, can you give counselor Sark a chance and then you come after counselor Brown? All right, well, counselor Sark, would you allow him to speak? He's frustrated over there.
Oh, go ahead, counselor Barnes.
All I want to say is, we already established, if we were going to use BJ Wood property, portion of it, we had an offer of a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars that we accepted. That was on less than half of the property. So if you take that whole property, put the parking in there, you've got a property value of a quarter million dollars right there, in kind.
Well, there you go.
Just throwing that out to you from my realtor expect, uh, you know, perspective.
Thank you, this is why you say on council, it's a different perspective, thank you so much.
Nothing wrong with in kind, it's money.
Right, it's exactly what.
It's better than money.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fair enough, but that's not what we told them. So, having said that, I think we're going to keep beating this dead horse and to dead, well, no, we've already beat it.
I hope it's not dead.
So, why don't we just take a pause on this until Jeff has a conversation with Brad, he understands more clearly where they're coming from, and then we can all just relax.
Take a deep breath.
Yeah, you, you need to really remember that the motion did not have sources of money. You need to remember that.
It did say from reserves.
Well.
It did say from reserves, because I made the motion.
He's right, he did.
But it doesn't, doesn't mean that if you don't have it in, in reserve, if there is another way, it doesn't mean that we shouldn't explore it, at least try to explore it.
Think you should stay true to your motion.
Well, you know what, when it comes to taxpayers' money.
I'm a taxpayer too.
Well.
And I am concerned, but.
Let's just take a pause, if I might suggest that, mayor.
I totally agree. Go ahead, counselor Brown.
I think this is the perfect opportunity to be crystal clear to the town of Cardston taxpayers and say exactly where we're at, if they're not following it. So what you're hearing at Extra Foods, what you're hearing wherever you are, wherever you're talking to people, crystal clear. Do we have shovels in the ground within a month? I'm no, just go with no. Do we have shovels in the ground within the summer? Odds are good, no. Is this pro-, most likely, next council, because none of us, well, we're done come October, I don't know about the rest of you, but I'm done come October. And so, will this be the next council pushing this through to actually make it happen, if it all comes to fruition? Yes, it will be. Is there anything else we need to be crystal clear on? Are your taxes going up five hundred dollars per household? No, as the mayor has said, do we take taxation seriously? Absolutely. Is there anything else that we're hearing around the table, because now is the perfect time? Jeff, do we need to add anything to this? I just, I just want, I'm tired of the hearsay, I think it's important to have facts. Is this a pickleball only building? No, it is not. It is a rec center for our community of Cardston and surrounding area. Do we want this to be a hub for mental health, personal health and fitness? Families, mothers and kids and everyone, seniors, yes, that is our goal. So, anyway, I just, I just think it's important for us to be crystal clear on no more hearsay, let's, let's talk in facts, and that, I believe, from what I, is my understanding, is where we're at.
Except that are a few facts missing.
Go ahead.
The fact that they're missing is the capital cost.
Yeah.
It is the operational cost.
Agreed.
It is the cost of putting that on whichever location that will be. All that is not there.
Agreed.
And that has people concerned. Have, do they have the right to be concerned? Yes, because they are not foolish.
Which is why we're not shovels in the ground, though.
Right, but you see, you see why they're concerned. They're concerned because we never had that open house that could have allowed them to directly come and talk with all of us and express their concern. We never had that opportunity and it's so frustrating to me because all the difficulties that we are having is because we never had that interaction with the people. We had a survey, but the survey, you know, it's, it's skewed from the beginning. It's not the same thing as having somebody seeing a blueprint, seeing what it could look like, seeing what the programming could look like, so different experience, so very different. But anyway, let's carry on with the suggestion of counselor Sark, let's wait next meeting. And you are right, counselor Brown, people need to be reassured, we are not putting a shovel in the ground, nor this month, nor the next, nor the one after, as you said. It's, it's something that requires a little bit more attention and a way of looking at it. But we need to help the group fundraise, and that I agree with.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so let's leave this alone. We were supposed to be done by seven, we're almost there. It was, yes, I wear plenty of worms flying.
Jeff, you had to know Rec Center was going to go.
Okay. Something interesting is the next item. And thank you, Councilor Self, for digging into it. I appreciate that. So the terrafour is an interesting concept of fiber.
Can I grab a glass, put some water?
Please go ahead. It's, it's an interesting concept that is being started in Milk River. And we had three councilors go there, Councilor Coe, Councilor Barnes, and Councilor Self went there on our behalf. And I must say, the presentation is a little complex because you can see the potential for making as small or as big as you want. You can start there and kind of grow it. But I think Jeff has something in his write-up. He was mentioning that maybe we should pursue a little bit more exploration before we understand what it may mean dollar-wise. So go ahead, Jeff.
I, I think you've captured it. I also included it, as you saw, because it took up an immense amount of space on your OneDrive. The blueprints for a potential design of fiber to the home that was done, to be frank, it was a bit inadvertently. So the county had put out a proposal to, to map out a fiber network throughout the county. And the consultant took that to mean that the urbans within it needed a full design. And so they did it. And so WSP has done a full design on the, on a fiber-to-the-home network. Now, even for me, and I am a layperson in this at best, even looking at it, I can see that it was done on a very high level. For example, it has lines running down both sides of the street, where in our case, you'd only run them on the poles on the one side of the street. Little stuff like that, but nothing major. So Murray was kind enough to, to give us the blueprints, which is great. And as little as I know about this, which I'll continue to preface, I think there is a, if the Town of Cardston wishes to have some type of municipally-owned fiber-to-the-home infrastructure, I actually think it's probably a combination of the wired and wireless approach. I think there's strategic fiber on the poles to strategic locations that then feed a network, and that's probably the most efficient way to build it from a capital point of view. I think that's where your capital cost efficiencies. One thing, and I didn't go to Milk River, but, but the feedback, and I think you would agree, that it's not really a robust system to look at how it all tethers and networks. It's very early and it's, it's very preliminary. But I look at things like, one of the biggest logistical challenges we have in Cardston is getting fiber down Main Street. There's too much in the avenues, there's too much in the street. But something like a terrafour wireless tether network could work awesome down Main Street. So you don't try and run fiber down Main Street, but you go wireless for that component. Maybe we, we have developments like the Atkins development. Then maybe we don't try and dig in fiber, but from off the top of the clubhouse, we have a robust wireless system. So when I got looking at this closer, and I will, again, I do not understand the business case and the business plan for municipally-owned fiber. It's just not something I'm familiar with. But there are people who do, and we've got people like Peter Cassarella, who are anxious to help us through that little bit and partner us with people who can do that business case very well. Companies like WSP, who did this design, are incredibly reputable engineering companies that operate worldwide. And there may be an opportunity for us to meet with them and say, okay, how do we focus on this area? And what would it cost for you to help get us to a point where we understand what a system in our community, a full build-out would look like? You know, they've done most of the work here. So now it's just looking at some of the intricacies. And then we need to find who that person is that can help us understand the business plan. As some of you know, some municipalities would run dark fiber and simply distribute bandwidth for other companies, other internet service providers, other entertainment phone, internet providers. Some, like Olds, run it, Waterton runs it, as a municipal utility. And they take care of all of that. Others contract it out like what the AXIA community is doing. So AXIA is just renting pole space and ground space and those kind of things. So there's a lot of ways to go about this. And I am not, I will not for a minute suggest I'm the guy that can tell you the best way to go. So what I'm curious about is, we've, we've kicked this around for a long time too. And it seems to feel to me that there's a good business case here. That seems to be what, what we should understand. But I don't understand if that's through a dark web, dark fi, dark web, we don't want to do.
Really?
A dark fiber installation? Or whether that's through a municipally managed utility? And I think we need to bring in some expertise. The question we all have, that I don't know the answer to either, is what will that cost to put that business case together? But there isn't any cost to find that out. It won't cost us anything to meet with WSP and say, okay, guys, how much to get this fine-tuned for Cardston and integrate wireless components where the infrastructure is difficult and tweak these drawings? And then I, frankly, I think it's talking to somebody like Peter Cassarella and saying, Peter, who do we meet with on the business case of this?
Yes. Who is, can I, can I answer that? A couple of things. When you talk to Peter, Peter's going to say, talk to Phil.
Oh, okay.
Oh, River Cable Club, the person who we met with?
Yeah.
Because Phil's, you know, and obviously what Phil will tell you is that the terrafour system will likely meet all of your needs. And actually, sickly will design it for you, probably for free, if you're buying this stuff from them.
Right, right. Yep.
So there, you know, it's one of, and I, I get where you're coming from, Jeff, because I think what you're suggesting is we probably would be best served with a hybrid of fiber and air.
Yeah.
So the other thing that I would, and I don't know how you would use it, because it's not a large amount of money, but South Girl will give to us a three thousand dollar grant to pursue fiber options for our town.
Okay.
Okay, so, so, Councilor Self, can I ask you then? Is that something that we can use toward a study like that?
Yep.
Get us to the rural broadband network, federal funding to get to that point.
So why, why don't you put a motion forward and allow administration to move ahead?
Okay, I would be happy to do that. So just so we're all clear on this, do we want to explore the hybrid? Or do we want to just consider, like, I'm sure when you, I mean, it's interesting that the county shared this and that they've used WSP and they've designed all this. I'm sure that there is a significant price tag involved with the fiber.
Yeah, yeah.
I guess what I would suggest too, Jeff, is phone up Phil.
Yeah.
And talk to him and just say, hey, you know, help me out here. Help me understand. Because I think what he would tell you is, you can do your entire town with the fiber, air fiber. It's not, it's using this terrafour system for significantly less money, and it'll have this, the same performance that you would, well, you would get close enough to the performance you would get from fiber that it would cost you.
But a fraction of the capital.
A fraction of the cost.
Yeah. There's things too, Councilor, that I'm curious about that. So for example, if we put strategic hard fiber on our poles, that's our advantage here, is both the wireless and the wired system are installed on our infrastructure, right? So that's a big plus. And I'm curious, it would take some negotiation, that we have huge chunks of the town, particularly, I would say, almost the whole north side, who is very underserved with that kind of infrastructure. I lived on Second Street across from Council of Angry, and I was fighting with Shaw constantly. They just didn't have the infrastructure to give me what they were selling me. And ask almost any Telus customer right now how they like their internet. The question is, is if we had, and I don't know the answer, but if we had strategic infrastructure, can we now distribute bandwidth for anyone? That wants to, so Telus now can service anyone they want in town through the town fiber? And as long as they're comfortable, we have, and, and can we run to key, key parts where the clinic can serve everyone with a twenty-mile range around the town with their system? If they're feeding off of us at key locations all around the community? For example, I just, I wonder about that type of arrangement too.
And, and those are all questions that I can't answer. I have an idea, but I don't want to miss.
Yeah.
But Phil can tell you, yeah, when you're dealing with the supernet, when you're dealing with Telus, they're going to tell you this, they're going to say that, they're going to tell you, you can't do this, they're going to say you can do that.
Yeah.
So I would suggest a conversation with Phil would probably help you down that road a long way. And the other thing is, we are in a unique position where if we are actually running fiber and we're doing a hybrid, well, we have an electrical department, and we don't have to ask anyone's permission for anything.
Yeah, I know.
Well, this is where the advantage is at the town level.
And that, you know, Phil's just, when I talk to him, he's like, Cardston would be like the easiest place ever to do high-speed internet, because you have your own system. You can put whatever you want, where you want, and do it however you want.
On our light standards or our power poles?
Right.
Right? So we own them both.
Yeah.
All right, so that brings us to the motion.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to direct administration to pursue the grant funding available through the, through the South Grow Regional Initiative for exploring broadband internet service.
Okay.
How's that?
Yeah.
Nice to speak.
So Jeff, that would be one first step. And after that, if we need to go to the other one?
Yeah, whether, whether you want to vote on this one and whether the next, if you want to do it tonight or you wait until we do a little work, if the next one is to start engaging with, you know, well, yeah, we, we can take that and start engaging with guys like Phil and WSP, just to see where we're at.
I'll just clarify too, like Jeff, Phil has said on a couple of occasions, just have Jeff phone me.
Yeah, all right.
Like, he's like, yeah, he says, I'll help walk him through it, I'll help him understand all logistics and all that stuff. So just have him phone me. He's happy to do that.
We'll start with that.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table. Any questions? All in favor? I mean, that, you can thank South Grow for that one.
When can I hook up?
When you move to Milk River.
Rude.
All right, so we, we good with that? Jeff, maybe we wait for a little bit of further information from that venue before we go anywhere else with the WSP.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Does it work, or do you want a motion now?
I'll, I'll work with Pete. We'll see what we can do for the funding. I'll have some staff start looking at how we can leverage that into the federal piece, if it's, if it's available.
Okay.
Then at the very least, we can make contact with these different people and get a feel for what they would expect, what, what would be next for them, that kind of thing. I'll bring it back and have a look for some more resolutions.
Okay, all right, thanks.
I'll just say, Jeff, good luck, because I'm even less astute when it comes to this than you. So that's why I'm trying to point you in the right direction and say, I'm just trying to point you in the right direction and say, Godspeed.
Yeah, I don't have a lot of internal expertise with this type of thing, but we'll see what we can do.
All right, so under eight, we have committee and other reports, the CEO report. Jeff, you're a busy man, and I know you were sick for two weeks, but.
I, I missed the, any announcements that came from the province today. Was there anything?
Tomorrow, I hear.
Supposed to be something at three thirty, I just hadn't heard.
Tomorrow, I think. I think I heard tomorrow that they were going to make some announcements.
They're supposed to relax a few rules, but I mean.
Because I'm looking at Recreation, wondering if they're going to open.
On one hand, it's relaxing, on the other hand, it's making it worse, but whatever.
If I could give just a real quick to that, Councilor, on the pool, really is the big one?
Yeah.
I met with Doug and Randy this morning just to see where we're at. We're actually going to fill it, but we're not going to start heating it. Just because if they give us a go-to time, it'll take ten days just to get it up to temperature.
Lately, we could probably skate on it.
Yeah, that's right.
Hey, the figure's getting.
We'll do polar dips at some point in the season.
Yeah, at six in the morning.
They're going to clean it, clean it one more time. We're going to fill it, we're going to start circulating it and treating it. And that, then we need about ten days from an announcement to be ready to use it. We're going to kind of hold a little bit on the spray park right now too. I mean, the weather isn't real warm for the next while either. So we're going to hold on that. From a staffing point of view, Doug says he's got a ton of applicants this year.
Oh, good.
Because like Sterling's not opening, Raymond's not opening till the end of June at half-staff.
Yeah.
McGrath may not be opening.
Yeah.
Richard Butte's looking at not opening. So he's getting applications, so he thinks that if we've got to find eight or nine kids,
We're good.
I'll be okay.
Good.
We had a number of local kids went and got certified over the winter, and they're just kind of waiting.
Yep.
So we are going to start filling it tomorrow, because that'll take a week. And then we'll just wait and see what happens.
I have a question of Jeff.
Go ahead, Councilor Barnes.
Eight weeks to wait for pipe for Phase Two of that twinning.
Yeah.
That wasn't anticipated prior to this whole thing happening?
Well, we only issued the tender on Phase Two about two weeks ago.
Okay, okay.
So what they're finding is, there's just not much out there. Brandon put in a purchase order for everything we needed for the year, and he's hoping it starts to trickle in bit by bit. Yes, that Phase Two may be delayed on pipe.
So what, what does the Phase Two entail?
Phase, so the, I think, I don't, I didn't feel or hear anything today, so I think the hammering's done. I think they were finished today. It'll be tying in each end, one to the lift station to the east. And then they're going to be coming back to the west, basically to the intersection at Chief Mountain Gas, and installing a new manhole and tying everything into there.
Okay.
So that's, so we've awarded that, it's done. But when you get out of, basically what it is, any of that specialty pipe, odd sizes, not eight-inch pipe, has become very, very difficult to get.
Okay, so we're going to have a couple of holes there for a couple of months yet before we can do anything with them.
Yeah, likely.
Backup's going to be cool.
Going to have to protect those holes from kids wanting to play.
Yeah, the contractor for Phase One and the contractor for Phase Two are actually meeting this week to figure out how to change over the site and keep everything secure. So they're working on that this week, because they should be done there pretty soon. They had a delay last week of about four days. Their trenches completely filled with mud and water midweek. They actually hit a beaver den. And it was totally full of water. And it filled all the holes, covered their equipment, everything.
Oh, my goodness.
So they got that all sorted out and.
Well, leave it to Beaver.
Yeah, there you go. So yes, there will be a delay there, Counselor, for sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, but I'm glad they were able to come through without. And I, yeah, every day I was listening to the pounding, I was saying, oh, my goodness, I'm not pounding today, what's happening?
He thought it was your COVID.
Familiar drumming, I was almost dancing.
Yeah, I'm sure. All right, so you have the March twenty twenty-one financial report. It's for your information. And there are a few committee reports there that are there also for your information. There was nothing in particular, except that I realized that at the authority, that seemed to know how to wreck power line pretty good.
I'm not going to comment on that, Mayor.
Yeah, please don't.
Yeah, move the lights.
Oh, gosh, then we wonder why we have no power. All right. Under nine, there is something that I asked Counselor Self to address. Send me an email, and I think you may want to talk a little bit about it.
I would, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
As all of you know, we've had a tremendous service provided to us by the Blackfoot Nation in Browning, Montana. And it's come to most of our attention that they are looking at, like, they're going to have to stop that service because of various political positioning, probably on both sides of the border. And I find that very disheartening, simply because, one, it was providing a great public service, two, not only the citizens of our town, but the surrounding area. Two, not only the citizens of our town, but the surrounding area and quite a ways away. And the other part of that is it was making a huge difference, at least I think in terms of indigenous relations and, uh, helping out there. So what I had suggested to the mayor was that perhaps we could have administration craft a letter to the federal government asking, one, why they would be, um, okay, I'm gonna use my terminology, why they would be so insensitive to the citizens of this area to basically put a stop to that sort of a service when we think that it's doing a tremendous amount of good for our area and the whole surrounding area and the whole province. If that makes sense, Mayor?
Yeah, it makes sense. And, uh, you know, we're not unique in this kind of situation. There are different border towns through different provinces that have experienced the same kind of issue. And, uh, the federal government has shut them down also. So it's unfortunate.
I, I wonder if it'd be worth our effort to contact provincial government, it's the same problem. I was talking to a doctor today and he says they've got all kinds of Moderna that they can't use cause they won't, won't let them use it for a second shot. It's just sitting there and nobody's coming in to get the shots. Yet our provincial government's holding it back until everybody in the province from age one to whatever has a shot. Right now, uh, two and a half, two and a half million Albertans have had at least one shot. So what province is holding back on that? I don't know if it's worth a letter or a comment or MLA.
I think there's, I think there's some merit to that too, because that's a big part of the clientele that's using this service. And, and I appreciate what you're saying, Mayor, is that there's, this is all along the 49th parallel. The difference that I find though is that in those communities, they were actually entering the United States, like going from Windsor to Detroit. Here, technically you're not even going into the United States, you're making a loop. And you're being sent back to Canada. So to turn this service and compare it to something in Detroit or Windsor or Niagara or whatever, I just, I find it hard to believe that that's apples to apples.
Okay, so do we want to, uh, contact, uh, Mr. Glenn Mark, our MP? And send that the letter there on behalf of this council? To be able to address that issue and try to understand, uh.
I would like to make that motion actually.
Please go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to direct administration to craft a letter to our Member of Parliament regarding the vaccination clinic that was taking place at the border and why that's.
Shut down.
Yeah, being shut down.
Okay.
Mentioning our unique situation also, Counselor South.
Right, right.
Okay. All, all right, yeah, what Counselor South is trying to say is that we have a particular situation here that's not quite alike what's across the rest of the 49.
If I may, I mean, I went down there and I'd been blown out of my car, they gave me the shot right in the car.
Right, I mean, I, I did it that way too, I mean.
I think we all did.
I think we all did.
You know, I mean, I mean, that is a service that I appreciate it. If something made me happy, that is, that was that trip. All in favor? Thank you. All right, so the issues that you're talking about, Counselor Coe, you are talking about the, uh, health issue that. I'm wondering, Jeff, if in your, uh, meetings that you have with your health people and Dr. Henshaw, if maybe you could address that this coming week or whenever you have your meeting?
Tuesdays are health.
Could you possibly address that? Because if they are starting to have an overdose of availability, sounds weird to say that.
What?
Sounds a little bit odd. But if we have so much doses that are not being used, that's also a concern, right?
I will address that with help, I think.
Thank you, appreciate that. All right, so as for the rest, there's a lot of, uh, towns, Clarosom, Raymond, Redcliffe, uh, Ryegriff that have jumped on the same bandwagon regarding the, uh, RCMP and the police, uh, issue that Alberta wants to implement. But the problem is the report is still not available. The other day I was so concerned, I asked Jeff to contact AUMA, Tanya Thon, and ask her, are we missing something? Because every week we're bombarded with this type of correspondence. And she said, no, and the AUMA will not have a public position until they have that report in their hand and analyze it. I say, fair enough. Uh, I was starting to question myself if we had missed a boat somewhere. And then there is a letter from Ms. Honorable Rick MacIver. That's regarding the MSR and it's not something that we did not know. They always send that to you after the fact, you know? But that's okay, at least I sent it.
Yeah.
So.
Good job.
And now we're going to go into confidential.
I move to go into closed session.
Thank you. We go into deal with recycling contract and intermunicipal collaboration framework. All in favor? Thank you. And, uh, thank you.